Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the school committee meeting of Monday, February 11th, 2019. First on tonight's agenda is the acceptance of the meeting minutes of January 28th, 2019.
So moved, sir?
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's a vote. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. First up, under audience on tonight's agenda, we have with us a very special person. We have with us for with Project 351, Mr. Charlie Kelleher.
Ms. Ms.
Ms. Ms. Charlie Keller, I'm sorry, I looked at my thing, sorry. Ms. Charlie Keller.
Invite Ms. Bond to the podium?
I will invite Charlie Kelleher to come on down.
Welcome, Charlie. Thanks for being with us.
Welcome to you, Ms. Bond.
Thank you very much. Let me introduce Charlie Kelleher, who is as cool as it gets. She is an eighth grader at the middle school. She's a member of the National Junior Honor Society where she's very active, the student government. She plays on Coach Devine's JV basketball team over at the high school and plays travel basketball at the town level. We were lucky enough to have unanimous decision by our staff and administration to have Charlie represent us at Project 351. We've sent someone each year, and I don't think we could get anybody better than Charlie. So I'd like to welcome her and have her recognized by the school committee. Do you have something you want to say?
When I traveled to Boston for Project 351, I first went to Faneuil Hall where I heard a speech from Governor Baker. Then I went to my service site, which was Cradles to Crayons. While I was there, I sorted clothes for the less fortunate children. Due to the weather, the day was cut short, but then I went back to Faneuil Hall and shared my experience with my fellow ambassadors.
Were you nervous?
Kind of.
Well, you did really well. That's wonderful.
Did you get a chance to meet Governor Baker and just spend any time with him?
No.
Oh, that's too bad. He's a nice guy. I like him. Did you learn anything from it or from your experience or anything that really struck you or?
Yeah, when I went to my service site, there were many children who don't have enough clothes to wear like a different outfit every day to school. And we were able to help around like 400 children in that hour we had.
Amazing. That's great. What is Project 351?
It's like a nonprofit organization of the 351 cities in Massachusetts.
Oh, good to know. Thank you. Great.
Half a day of school tomorrow.
I guess I do. I'm being, I'm being summoned. So I'm going to read this. Okay. "We'd like to congratulate you, Charlie, on your participation in Project 351. We're very proud of you. Thank you very much. Congratulations." There you go. You're welcome.
Dr. Cron, can you step so we can get a picture?
Okay, we're going to step over here for a photo op. Ready? There he is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Charlie, congratulations. Thank you for being here. Thank you. Ms. Kelleher, I'm sure your parents are very crap, very, very proud, and I'm sorry for my misstep earlier when I called you mister. Well, thank you. Congratulations. Great. Also, next up, another special guest, not quite as special, but still a special guy. We have with us Mr. Bob Mahoney with the South Shore VOTEC update. Welcome, Mr. Mahoney.
He's nowhere near as good luck.
And Charlie, by the way, don't feel obligated to feel like you have to sit here all night. You can if you'd like, but if you have some homework you have to do at home or get home for dinner, you're welcome to take off too. Thanks, thanks again.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having me up. Just, I don't know, just a couple of things that come right off the top. I'll give you an update on what's been going on. Our horticulture program has been in full swing now for two years. We have applied for and received and is now being ongoing as a grant for a greenhouse that is being built and constructed out back behind the building. So some of the things that they'll be doing as part of horticulture is to be having plants and things like that there that'll eventually be able to have sales and holiday sales out to the communities and offer things out there. The kids are going to not only learn about the aspects of landscaping, they're also going to have some plantings and stuff along with the food things, and they're going to be working along with their science department as well, as far as some of those go.
They're going to actually go with the structure with sophomores?
Yes, they're doing it right now. It comes in a kit together. They put together with the things, they're in our carpentry department along with our metal fab units, putting it together. They're actually not glass. I thought it was glass panels because then I said, we got straight next to the baseball field, and I'd said, oh. We don't, but it's actually really not. It's like a poly fiber that comes on there that they're using right now.
You've got to know it'd be better for them.
Yeah.
Good.
So, but only I would know about hitting foul balls, not hitting anything straight. But as of today, there are 63 new Rockland applications that have come into our building. Fifty-six from eighth grade applications, 46 of them are from the Rogers Middle School, and eight are from elsewhere. And there also was seven underclassmen apps. Five of these students are from Rogers and two from elsewhere. The, this is the largest right now of the applications from all of our eight sending towns do come from Rockland. So the, while I'm on that subject, the first, the first link of approvals went out last Friday. The second one will go out this week, this Friday, I think, and then the following will go after vacation week for those there for the approval process and who's the acceptances and who has been there. Right now, if you're looking for total numbers, how many Rockland kids are in the building today? There's a grand total of 156. There's 51 freshmen, 36 sophomores, 33 juniors, and 36 seniors, all from Rockland. I know this will go. For FY '28, the preliminary cost per pupil will be $12,130. FY '19, the cost was $11,974, which is a very minimal increase. I think our total increase for the all eight sending town budgets was like 3%, 3.3% I think for the next coming years. And that's with all the contractual things that we have going on. And the, what else would be going on would be the, Cody Campbell is a Rockland student. He's a Rockland resident. He is the vocational student of the year for the school. Out of all the whole class, senior class, he is the top vocational student, and he's a Rockland resident as well. His name's Cody Campbell.
What's he going to do, Bobby? What's he going to do?
To be honest with you, I'm not sure what he's, I know he's student council advisor, and I'll be getting more updated information. I'm going to bring him up to the selectmen's meeting to be recognized up there as well.
Bring him here too, if you want. You can bring him here too.
I could have. I thought the meeting was last week.
I don't know why you would have thought that.
Yeah, I don't know either.
Because I told him that. That was my fault. No, we're happy to hear about that for Cody. That's actually awesome news. It's awesome to hear any Rockland kids succeeding.
Yeah.
Whatever he decides to do, I'm sure with that, you know, record of performance, he's going to be well-prepared and do very well for himself. So that's awesome.
They're quite a basketball team down there this year, don't you?
They did pretty good. They're okay. They've been improving. They're coached by a Rockland guy, so.
I know.
They're doing okay. But that, no, the school's been going pretty well. There haven't been any major issues. The, you know, the co-op program has been going pretty well. One of our goals this year was to increase our, get our students out, get them, not in a bad way, but get them out in the work field because that's what they came for the school to do. And that's what we're working on, getting our co-op numbers out there. We've been reaching out to a lot of people in the community and been working out very well, so.
Outstanding.
Things have been going well. Horticulture's coming along. Things are going on, we still got the little, things are going on, a little bit plumbing and getting involved with HVAC, and so they're starting to incorporate those together, starting to incorporate auto body and auto mechanics together there. So we'll be doing a lot of things there, plus you still have our engineering and other things that everybody else is doing too as well.
Bobby, will the horticulture bring in landscapers, that type of thing?
Yeah.
Because there's so many out there, and I don't think a lot of them know.
Well, we had a, we opened up our advisory for that, and it's the largest amount we've had. We had close to, close to 80, 70 people at one point in time from different areas, Rockland, Tommy Resk, Averton guys, you know, Chris Kane. I mean, there's a lot of major landscaping companies from around the area that were very interested in coming on board because it's, it's a trade that's well-needed.
Yeah, and they need professionals to know what to do.
Oh, yeah. They don't want, they don't want me showing up trying to do their own.
That's true. I don't either.
It's good too, because Norfolk Aggie's probably your biggest competition in terms of getting that student, so.
Mike, you bring up a great point. And a couple of years ago, when I got involved with the school council down there, this was one of my goals, was to try and get horticulture in there because it was costing us. If anybody from Rockland wanted to go to a horticulture school, it was costing us a large amount of money to go there between transportation and the cost of tuition there. So I just said, jeez, we could put three or four kids down here for what it costs to take one up to Norfolk Aggie to get the same thing there. The two, Tom Hart, the vocational teacher down there for horticulture is, went to UMass, he has all kinds of degrees and all this and training. And the new girl that's coming on this year, she has all things to go for the pharmacy, I mean, for the greenhouse, and she does, she has all certifications, and then they're going to work with the sciences as far as working on soils and for growing vegetables and plants and things like that, so.
Outstanding.
Yep.
Any other comments, questions from the committee?
Well, to be fair, as we finish up, just me being in the tell them now mode, this is the last time I'll get to see Mr. Mahoney here in my time as being on the school committee.
You make it sound permanent, yeah.
Well, no, just for me, just for me. And I've had the chance to work with Bob for quite a while now, and since he's come on as our, as Rockland's representative to VOTEC for the school, for their school committee, I think there's been a really increased level of communication and cooperation and preparation from you and you all come into the meetings, and you're a great friend, and your Rockland people should know that they're well represented by this man.
Thanks, man. Thank you very much. Great job of service in town of Rockland too in your role.
Thank you.
I look forward to seeing you in public, not at work.
You got it. Sounds good, man. Sounds good.
Any questions, Rockland? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
We have a busy night under audience tonight.
Yes.
And tonight, we have a very, very important topic to discuss, and some folks that I know are very well-prepared to discuss it. We're here to discuss the threat protocol for Rockland Public Schools. And tonight, we're very welcome and blessed to have with us our school resource officer, Mr. Schnebel, Ms. Bond, and Dr. Harrison. Welcome.
So I'd sort of like to do this as a, sort of, I'd like to sort of interview the three of them about this, because I have some set questions, but I want to tell everyone where this came from. We've had to send out a few notices this year about threats that have come into the school, and I'm sure it's alarming to read those emails or to think that some things are going on. And I think that the public would get some comfort knowing sort of what goes on and how thoroughly we handle these situations. So I asked John and Ethan and Beth to come tonight, and I've prepared a few questions for them. So I'm going to begin with this one, and any one of the three of you can answer. What happens when the office receives word of a possible threat toward the school or a student? What's the first thing that happens?
Good evening, everyone. I guess I'll take this first question. The first thing we do is notify the police. We're lucky to have Officer Schnebel here as our school resource officer, and it really makes a difference having one person as the contact from the Rockland Police Department because we can, he understands the situation, he knows what it's like to work in a school, he knows the students, which is also extremely important. So working with Officer Schnebel is great. We contact him first. He's, he makes himself always available, not just during the day, at night, on the weekends, he always makes himself available because we receive this information, it could be at night or on the weekend, but he's always making himself available, so we appreciate that. We then speak to as many students, parents, teachers that know any information about the threat. We try to learn as much information about who may have made this comment. And then once we gather that information, we, in collaboration with the police department, we will speak to that accused student and their family. Sometimes that student is found responsible, sometimes they're not. But ultimately, we do our due diligence. The Rockland police, if they feel it's warranted, they'll go to the house, they'll check, make sure that if the threat was made with a weapon, per se, they'll make sure that there's no weapons in the house. We have conversations with students and families about that, the police do as well. We try, we often, as a school, as an administrative team, we struggle with the need to respect student confidentiality. Students have rights to privacy, so we have to always be careful what we share with families in the community at large because we want them to feel reassured, we want them to know as much information as possible, but we have to balance that with the need to respect the privacy and the student confidentiality of the student that may have made that threat. Consequences are given to any student who's found responsible for making the threat, any student that may have made a rumor about a threat that's not true, if that rumor was made in not good taste, that student will have a consequence. And sometimes, even if the threat is not credible, if the threat is not substantiated, we'll have the police, we'll have extra police presence on the day which the threat was supposedly to occur, and that's because we want students and staff to feel safe, even if we know it's safe. Sometimes the rumors make it the feeling that they're not feeling as safe, so having the extra police presence sometimes just makes people feel safe. So even though we don't think there's a threat, we do that as a precaution.
I think that summarizes it.
So can you tell me the difference between hearsay and a direct report and how that may have, maybe plays out in your investigation?
I think sometimes, I think often kids come to us because of concern for safety or the well-being of other students or concern for the school as a whole. I don't think there's a malice that's from this, but more it's making sure that people are safe and okay. When we start to talk to kids and a kid says, okay, no, I didn't hear it, but so-and-so told me, and you talk to, oh, I didn't hear it, but so-and-so told me, and then you kind of peel back every layer of that onion and you get to the point that nobody heard it, or it wasn't said, or this is what was said instead, or I was frustrated about this game I was playing online, so I made this comment, and it was like that game of telephone that goes from one end to the other. You can kind of sense the credibility because you have the, I think you, you can feel it, right? You can feel kind of the culture of the school, and by talking to kids, get a better sense of what direction you're moving in. So I think when we talk about hearsay, it's because it goes from here to here to here to here, and we have to just find that path. Is there a credibility or is it more gossip and rumor? And react appropriately to those situations.
So Ethan, from, I should say Officer Schnebel, sorry. From a police perspective, is there anything you'd like to reinforce with students and families regarding school safety?
Yeah, I know it's, it's tough because people see, or these rumors come and it kind of snowballs and gets a little bit bigger than what it really is. The main thing is we want everybody to understand that we do a lot of work behind the scenes to make sure we can verify whether or not there is a threat or if it's just a rumor or if it's just something that was maybe misheard. We wouldn't have our students come to school if we felt that it was a real threat. We do so much work behind the scenes to make sure that everybody's safe and that we wouldn't be able to kind of deal with it ourselves if we had you guys, had our students come into school knowing that there is a legitimate threat out there. That won't happen. If we feel that there's a legitimate threat, that there is a legitimate concern, we're not going to just kind of roll the dice. We're going to make sure that we do what's best for everybody, and that's erring on the side of caution and, you know, dealing with the safety first.
Excellent. Tell me about social media and how that's affected.
That's.
Maybe I should speak on that one first.
Sure.
I think with the, as far as social media, because people are asking now, I think, why are we getting these notifications more than we did before? And I think the reason for that is because of, partly because of social media, we want to make sure that the same message gets out to everyone, that the kids have the message, that the parents have the messages, message, that the families all have the same message because it's the same snowball effect that, you know, one person, you're aware of that, right? Get on social media, say something, and they change it, and they change it and change it. So that's part of the reason I think that we give the, we're sending out these emails and also so parents can educate their kids and have those conversations. It's a, it's a partnership. It's us at school, it's the parents at home. We all want that same message. So when it comes to social media and communication, that for me is one of the most important parts of the email.
And I think also, if you want to know something about what we know, just email or call us. There's no bad question, there's no concern you can't have as a parent or a student. So definitely come see us, email us versus maybe speculating on social media.
What happens if you get a threat via social media?
That's, I mean, if a threat comes in by social media, it's a long process in terms of getting in touch with the service provider, whether it's Facebook, Twitter, Snapchat, Instagram, any number of kick. There's just so many different social media outlets. There's a, there's a process, but when there's a school threat, social media outlets tend to help out and work with us quickly in getting the information we need.
But it's a whole different process.
Oh, it's a long process. Subpoenas are involved, warrants are required. There's a lot of investigation that goes into it when it comes through.
The other question is, you know, when you have a student or have somebody that does make a threat, that, you know, one of the things they didn't hear is that, does he, he help get medical professionals involved, so the school psychologists or psychiatrists or something like that?
Mm-hmm.
You know, and what's their role in this whole thing?
Let me take it.
Sure. Yes, if we believe there's a mental health piece to it, the adjustment counselor's definitely involved, our guidance counselor's involved, we also have outside services to use as well. So yes, definitely, if we feel a student's making a threat, there's two, two pieces to it. There's the mental health, safety of why that student made the threat, and then there's the disciplinary piece. The administration typically handles the disciplinary piece, and then the guidance counselor will handle the social emotional piece, and we keep them separate on purpose.
Okay. Thank you.
Just so the public's aware, the only reason I had just high school and middle school come tonight, not all the elementaries as well, is most of the notices that we've had to send home about issues have come from the middle school and the high school. Before I turn it over to the committee for more questions, I just want to say how fortunate I feel to work with the three of you in these situations because we do make these decisions as a team. We work for, I feel very comfortable and confident in working with the police department and the fire department for that matter, and you guys do a great job helping to keep us safe, so I appreciate it.
Can I just, can I just say that I think Mr. Shipper at the middle school, Ms. Paulding and Mr. Damon at the high school are all critical parts of what happens as far as working with kids in this situation, too.
I think the administrative team all the way across the board, whether it's our adjustment counselors and our guidance counselors, whenever anything comes in that we have to look into, they're great resources for me to kind of just figure out what's going on and get some better details to.
Yeah. It's a, I remember well, long before we had a school resource officer, when I came, I had some experience with a school resource officer, and I used to say on a pretty regular basis, what it does is it builds a bridge between the police department and the schools. And I feel that that's really happened here. And it can't, it can't happen unless the right person's in the position, so we appreciate you very much. I know you have like a whole video montage that's been made for you, so I won't.
It's just a rumor.
But, it's just a rumor, yeah. But anyway, so any questions?
Just a couple of comments for me and a question. First echo what Alan said, you know, as I know in this committee, all of us either have or have had children that go to Rockland Public Schools, and as a parent sending my kids off to school, first of all, as a parent, I can't tell you how great it makes me feel to know that there are individuals who have gone through the preparation that you all have, that care as much as that you all have about my kids and about everyone else's kids in this district. One of you pointed it out that you guys want our kids safe, and there is absolutely no doubt in my mind, and I think from anybody else in this committee's mind, the level of which you care about our students and take great care of them. My other comment in question is kind of the comment sort of going back to the social media piece, is that social media and sort of the forums on social media are sort of a bastion of misinformation. And oftentimes, when there may be a rumor or a notification that's been sent out or some piece on the news or some comment by a parent at a soccer game, that that spreads like fire and instantly goes right to social media where that speculation grows. So my question is if you could comment just a little bit about the policy as far as notification and when a threat, when it's deemed either credible or not, how you might deem the appropriate manner in which to communicate that to parents and to the school community?
It varies. It really varies. It depends on timing, time of the day. It depends on when we get the information about the potential threat. If it's something that we think is urgent, that is credible, they're going to know immediately. If it's something that we're investigating, we know it's not credible, but we're just going through our due diligence and making sure the family of the accused knows first, that's important too. So it's a kind of a balance between understanding what we can release to families and what we can't release. Sometimes that requires us to call a school attorney, just to run it by them, to make sure that we aren't violating confidentiality as well.
As a point you bring up is one of the big reasons why I asked the question. So for parents that may see a police present or presence or an emergency services presence at the school wondering why they haven't been notified, sometimes there are very real and very serious reasons as to why they haven't been notified, so I'm glad you brought that piece up.
And we can't stop on Ethan's toes either, as that moves in that direction.
And our students deserve the privacy that they have when appropriate as well. Now, how about when it is credible? How, what is, what are the steps by which our community is notified in that case?
Immediately. Via phone call, text message, email, the connected system, be very, right after, if we're going into lockdown or Alice, then shortly after we go into lockdown, Alice, or we evacuate, very quickly right after that.
Outstanding.
And we coordinate the message with, with police so that we're sending out one consistent message. If there's a press release, it's, you know, it's not done in isolation. We work together with the police and the fire department to make sure that we're giving one clear message to the public.
In my experience, it's been seamless as far as the communication has gone. I ask the question not so much for my benefit, but for those out there in TV land, I guess I'd say, but the communication, to my experience, both with, from Alan to our committee and what I've witnessed from Officer Schnebel and the police department and school administration has been nothing but outstanding and inappropriate.
Yeah. I would like to say, first of all, I know Officer Schnebel works very hard at what he does, and if a ship ever comes in, financial ship that is, to the town of Rockland, we could use another school resource officer because, because of the concentration that he spends in the middle school and the high school, the friendship thing with police officers with younger kids is hugely important, I feel, as they move along through the system. Before they get to you in, in middle school, it would be great to have someone else, so that's all. I just plant that seed out there because I know a lot of districts do have two, and the large ones even, three school resource officers.
I think Dan kind of took a little bit of where I was going with the social media end of it, but I think if we go about it this way, maybe you can answer a couple of questions and people will grasp this. Do you say 90% of our students are considered minors, correct? In the schools, right? Give or take. We can't even mention their names in anything, even if they were walked out, walked out the front door in handcuffs, is that correct?
That's correct.
And if they were charged with anything, nobody could comment because it's a criminal investigation that's active, correct?
Correct.
So then maybe the people on Facebook should realize that, looking back at last year and how quick everybody responded when there was a phone call made to a news station, how everything was sniffed out, found, handled that quick, realize that you guys know what you're doing and shouldn't be out there blasting ridiculous stuff on when it's 12 different stories about one thing that happened. And to me, I don't even look at it anymore because I know in your hands, it's fine. I know you guys have it all under wraps and you're doing everything to protect everybody you can. And, you know, I, I second what Dick said. I wish we could clone you and have like one for every school, truthfully, but it's not feasible, but, you know, and I think the way that you guys are running the middle school and the high school, I, I think you're doing it right. I don't care what people say, and I just think they need to realize that everybody acts in the kids' best interests, and that's that, so. Any other?
I'm sorry.
Yep, please.
I wanted to thank you for coming.
I wanted to thank you for coming. I know that I discussed this with Dr. Kron. As soon as the letter goes home, my phone seems to get a little crazy. Being a mom out in, on the field and at pickup and different things, people feel that it's okay to approach me, which I love, and I know we've all shared this, we all love. But I wanted you to come so that maybe all of this, what we're doing tonight, is opening up that opportunity for them to feel comfortable that they can go to you. Email, phone calls, your offices are open, but maybe this would put them at a little ease. I know I'm at ease, like you've said, we've all said, we totally trust you. My two kids are in the middle school, they wouldn't be going if I didn't trust you, right? So, but I know you've got our backs, I know you care for all of our students, and we all appreciate that you are trying to keep them safe. But I wanted you to come, because I think that everything you've said tonight sort of needed to be out in public and for people to be able to know, you know, the little backups protocol that like everyone's saying we can't say, but we are doing. I know you're doing your due diligence, and I appreciate that. Excuse me, every student, we've said, deserves to go to school and feel safe, and I know you agree with that. And I want to say, I appreciate your time, and I appreciate your efforts. And I think that we wanted to have you come tonight, so I'm going to cough, so that we could say that to you. So thank you for coming, I appreciate it, my children appreciate it.
And just to the public, I appreciate the, my phone does not ring off the hook following these notices. And in some cases, that would. I take that, no, but I take that as a sign of trust from the community as well. But I also encourage the community, as Officer Schnabel said earlier, please discuss these important things with your children. Don't hesitate to contact one of us should you hear something. Let us decide if it's credible or not, just like we will let the police decide if something is credible or not. We don't want people to not call. I think our, we have a lot of safety protocols in place. We have regular meetings on the building level, on the district level with police and fire, so that we have a lot of safety protocols in place, we're prepared. We do tabletop exercises so that we can be as prepared as possible. But in the end, our biggest defense is the trust we have with the community and the relationship we have with students and teachers and parents and the school. And that means that you trust us to pick up the phone and call us if you have a concern, or my uncle just doesn't seem right this morning and he has a very large gun collection. We'd like to know about that. So, again, I compliment the community on being so supportive and trusting, I appreciate that very much. But at the same time, I'd encourage you to have conversations with your children and to continue to reach out to us should you have any questions.
See something, say something.
See something, say something, right.
Or hear something.
And we understand that it's very scary as parents.
Very scary.
Very scary. The one thing we all want is our children to come to school and feel safe when they're here and come home. So that's what my whole point was, is we get it, and I wanted to make sure that they understood that we got it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next on tonight's agenda is our superintendent's report. Dr. Kron.
Thank you. So tomorrow, we will have an early dismissal due to the pending storm. So I want to, I know that a phone call went out and an email message went out. But kindergarten will dismiss tomorrow at 11:15 a.m. Grades one through four will dismiss at 12 o'clock, and the high school and middle school will dismiss at 12:30. So that's tomorrow. And please be safe during the storm tomorrow. Second, I noticed in the elementary school newsletters, there was quite a bit of talk around this, the idea of a growth mindset. And the founder, the person who really coined the term growth mindset is Dr. Carol Dweck. And she defines this growth mindset ideas. In a fixed mindset, people believe their basic qualities like intelligence or talent are fixed traits, and they spend their time documenting their intelligence or talent instead of developing them. They also believe that talent alone creates success without effort. Dweck and others widely refute these assumptions. In fact, research suggests that we learn more from failure than from success. So in the Rockland Public Schools, we believe that hard work, perseverance, and risk-taking are at least as important as natural ability. Now, ability does play a part in athletics, anybody who's ever played a sport knows that. There are just some people who are very, very good at some things. But I also know many people who have maybe a modest amount of talent, but a work ethic that is out of this world. And to me, 95% of the time, I will take that work ethic over talent any day. And I just, I commend the elementary schools and the middle school and high school for adopting this growth mindset concept and for featuring it in their schools. And I want to, just as Principal Smith pointed out in her principal's message, she said, quote, "When your child says they aren't good at something, use the word 'yet.' You're not good at math yet. Remind them of their video games. Were you good at the video game the first time you played? And how did you improve? And why did you improve? Better yet, as adults, share your mistakes with your children. Teachers, share your mistakes with your students. Show them how failure and perseverance have led to success." So I just wanted to feature that in my superintendent's report, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Alan.
Yep.
I'm not good at golf, yet.
Yet.
Neither am I, yet.
Yet.
I'm not good at golf.
I'm good at sleeping.
There you go. Excellent.
Next on tonight's agenda, we have nothing under communications. So under reports, we have our monthly reports for January. We'll be entertaining four motions for the administrators, guidance, nurse, and pupil personnel services reports.
So moved.
All those in favor? That's a vote, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
I like the idea of a Quebec City.
Yes. Next up, school newsletters for February, for your information, is always very colorful and informative.
Yes.
Hope everyone takes the time to be able to read their child's reports, they're great. Next up, item C, under building rentals for January, also FYI, for your information. Quite a busy month in the area of building rentals. Lots of basketball going on in our gyms and our community using our buildings, which is what the goal is and what we hope to see happening. Seeing nothing under old business, under new business. Item A, FY20 preliminary budget presentation. Dr. Kron.
So this is a first pass of the preliminary budget. I'd like to preface the budget by just talking a little bit about an overall change in our population. We've discussed the challenges that we're facing and the challenges that some of our students come to school with every day. It's important to understand that while our population has remained very level and compared to some of our neighbors, a number of those students that we're picking up in school choice and some other venues, they come to us with some challenges. And these challenges are a challenge for the classroom teacher, and it puts a lot of pressure on them. I'll give you an example. You pretend that you're a fifth grade teacher, and it's February, just before February vacation, and a new student moves in to your classroom, and they don't speak a word of English. And so you're a teacher with 20 children, and now you have 21 children, and one of these children don't speak any English. That's a real situation that happens, that just happened today, I happen to know for a fact. And our teachers take those challenges, and they're incredibly resilient. We had a great meeting this morning with the administrative team, and I reiterated to the principals how much I appreciate their attitude, because it's very easy to say, how am I going to handle this? How am I going to handle this? And we handle it, because it's just our, the way we approach things. So I bring it up in preparation for the budget, because challenges to students are expensive. They're expensive to work with in school, and they're very staff-heavy. So as I talk about the budget, I just want everyone to keep in mind that we're, our population is pretty much 51% free and reduced lunch. We have some students coming to school with, that are highly prepared, and we have other students coming to school who are less prepared. And all of these things come into play when it comes to budget. So I'm going to talk about the budget in terms of salaries, special education, annual expenses, and credits. And then finally, our final requested proposal. So I'm going to begin with salaries. So this, ooh. Do I have a pointer? I think I have a pointer. Is it the middle thing? No? Wait, oh, I got it, I got it, thanks Dave, appreciate it, okay, excellent. So, a 2% increase to our teachers. We're requesting $16,302,605, and that is an actual 2% increase, just to roll our teachers over. 2% increase for paraprofessionals. You'll notice that there's a 4% increase listed under custodian and maintenance. And that's because their new contract, we're in year one of a three-year contract, but we just settled, literally just settled, the custodial contract. So their 2% increase was not rolled into these figures. So that's why it reads as a 4% increase, because their retro pay was not included in the FY19 actual. So that's why it's at 4%. Everything else is 2% increase. I'm going to, I did it again, I'm going to skip down to, these are four positions that we are asking to add for next year. The middle school dean position, we currently have a very small administration at the middle school, and we have nearly 750 students. So we have a principal, an assistant principal, one adjustment counselor, and two guidance counselors. And they essentially function as an administrative team. But our vice principal, assistant principal, spends the vast majority of her time in discipline. When I use the word discipline and I use the word dean, people think of detention, after-school trouble. I think of these positions as, these are teachers. They're teaching kids who have challenges how to navigate their day. I was an assistant principal for eight years before becoming a high school principal, and those eight years, I learned a tremendous amount. And that is that the position like dean or assistant principal, what you really are is a social emotional educator. You're a social worker, you're working with families and parents, and you're trying to keep kids engaged in school when sometimes their challenges over, are just so much more than they can handle at the time. So the middle school, in my opinion, is, would really benefit from a full-time dean, so I am asking for support on this request. School resource officer was discussed before. This $40,000 would be half of the cost, we're estimating, of the cost of a second school resource officer. Chief Llewellyn has brought this up to me numerous times, I know he has an interest in this as well. So we are asking for a second school resource officer. The third position, we have now gone good, I want to say three solid years without an actual certified librarian at the high school, middle school. We have NIASC, the accreditation committee, they're visiting us this year and next year. Having a certified librarian on our staff is mandatory, and so this is something that I don't see as optional. We have put it off as long as we can, but I believe we need to fill that position very soon. And a middle school math coach. We hired a math coach at the elementary schools, and this is his first year. And he's having a remarkable effect, at least in the kind of evidence that we're able to get at this point. Teachers are seeking him out, he's working with, doing a lot of great work with data and teachers and how to take testing data and make that data actionable. He's been an invaluable resource. I would like to see the middle school have access to that same resource. Someone who could hyper-focus on math, working with our fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade teachers to make them better at teaching math. So I feel that that's something that the district would also benefit from. The total salary appropriation that I am proposing is $22,756,912. Special education, so a number of things are going on in special education that are not helping us. The state, so when we place students out of district, from, they are now going to a separate school. For example, the May Institute. These are private schools who contract with schools to work with their most challenging students. The state, DESI, Department of Education, has approved increases for at least 12 of these private providers. And what that means is they've approved them raising their rates. Well, those rate increases come directly to us. So I don't have the figure in front of me, but I will tell you that it was, I think it's $269,000. That is the cost of a residential placement at the May Institute for one child, $269,000. So a student could move in at any time, and we would have to pay that, we're obligated to pay that. So there have been quite a number of increases. Our out-of-district placement is up slightly compared to last year. But this, that's why we're asking, we're projecting the need for a 5% increase in tuitions, and that total request is $2603,489. Transportation, this figure, we're also projecting a 5% increase, but I will tell you that we have a transportation audit that's going on right now. We're having all of our transportation audited. And in general, I don't think they were overly impressed with our transportation program, which is great. That's why we have an auditor in, so they can tell us what we're not doing well. But one area that they were impressed with was our special education transportation. And that is because with the investment on the town side to help fund some of these leases for vans, what we are doing is instead of placing, instead of paying outside companies to transport students, Linda Miniglia and Colleen Forlisi have had the foresight to bring a lot of this work back into district. So we rent the van, or we buy the vans, and we transport the students ourselves, and it saves a tremendous amount of money. So this figure, $243,626, would be a heck of a lot higher if it weren't for their forward-thinking and good work. And I'm very much looking forward to the transportation audit coming back, because I believe there's more money to be saved there. Yes, Mr. Mills?
Student count in special education?
You mean percentage?
How many students?
We have about 300 IEPs right now, district-wide. Yeah. About 300 IEPs. I couldn't tell you the actual number out of district, placed out of district.
How many, 33?
Yeah. And I'm also projecting a 5% increase in supplies, it just goes along with tuition and transportation. And that number is 77,490, with the total special education request of $2924,605. And again, I want to thank Colleen Forlisi and Linda Miniglia for their work in saving money in special education transportation. Next, our annual expenses. Legal and business, we have an arbitration currently going on, and our legal bills have been up a little bit this year. We did transition to a legal company that is strictly schools, Long and DePetro. They've been excellent, but we are spending a little bit more money with them than we were with our previous attorneys. But we also have an arbitration going on, which is quite expensive, so we're hoping that that will wrap up. We're proposing a 3% increase for school office and legal and professional development. Tuition reimbursement is capped at $55,000. When we negotiated the new teacher contract, we pay up to $55,000, no matter how many people request reimbursements, and at $55,000, we cut it off. So I will tell you that that has been capped already this year, so we're, the teachers have used up that $55,000. So that's why that number doesn't change. There's a 3% increase listed for instructional testing and health services. Regular ed transportation, there is an 8% increase. That is primarily due to contract and fuel adjustments, which are both up substantially. Transportation seems to be a part of our economy that's getting more and more expensive on a regular basis. And homeless transportation is also a component of that. And as you're going down, these two lines right here, building and custodial supplies and unemployment and separation, these two, there's a 20% increase and a 47% decrease, but if you take these two items and you add them together, together, there are 3% increase for both. We just reallocated, we took some money that we were budgeting under unemployment and separation, and we moved it into building and custodial supplies. But essentially, these two areas represent a 3% increase. So when, if we go and decide that we're filing, that we're keeping track of an expense in a way that we're not happy with, if we change it, if we change it, then we have trouble comparing to the previous year, because now we've changed the categories. But in this case, we've decided to make that change, even though it creates a little confusion in my presentation. And then finally, this $88,000 is non-public tuition, is our Independence Academy students. Independence Academy is a recovery high school located in Brockton, and it's run by North River Collaborative, and we send students there when necessary. And 3% increase for VOTAC and AGI. The total appropriation request for the annual expenses is $5,183,538. Yes.
How many students are in that homeless transportation category?
I think currently.
18.
18 students. We're up six students over last year at this time. But the transportation costs, for example, I know Ms. Hackett mentioned to me earlier today that she had to write a check for $7,000 for a month of transportation for one child. So it's very, very, it can be very expensive. So that's why we're trying to do a lot of these things in-house. But this is picking up a child at their house, wherever they are, the McKinney-Vento laws, and I know the state is doing some work to try to make those seem a little more practical. Sometimes we're transporting a student from very, very far away, like for example Plymouth. And so that student is spending a tremendous amount of time on the bus to come here. Maybe it would make more sense for them to attend school in Plymouth, but the way the laws are currently written, that transportation is mandatory.
I had one, the student that, I had a homeless student that came in from Worcester to Boston every day.
Wow. Yeah, every day. And that gets very expensive, but it's also not good for the child. So. So, we're hoping, I'm hoping that the legislature can act quickly enough to make that change. Finally, I create this slide because I want to show nearly 74% of the entire budget that we're presenting here is salaries. There is not a lot of, there's not a lot of room to play with. It's very, very fixed. But again, I think sometimes people don't understand how much of our budget is salaries and contractual. So, that's why I created this slide. Now, here's what we are contributing to the budget in the form of credits, grants, and our revolving accounts. So, here we have, we've had a number of changes that have not helped us this year. There are some state and federal grants that have been reduced. Title I has decreased. Title, federal and state funding has gone down. The 391 Early Childhood Grant was completely cut. The 274 Grant was also cut. And our IDEA allocation is down. So, the contributions from the state and federal grants have been decreased for next year by $112,163. And of course, we have to make that money up ourselves in our own budget. And that leads to Circuit Breaker, which is also down by $120,000 for next year. So, these are two grant programs that are completely out of our control. They tell us what we're going to get, we get it, and we have lost a total of $232,000, $232,163 from the previous year, which again, has to be made up. And what we're doing is, last year, we contributed from our revolving accounts, we contributed And what we are budgeting for, for next year, is to increase that yet again, to contribute $950,000 from revolving. So, that 950 breaks out down here. We're looking to contribute $150,000 from building rental, $150,000 from special education revolving, $50,000 from bus, $100,000 from daycare, $500,000 from school choice. That's up $300,000 from the previous year, for a total of $950,000. Now, that's a very dangerous thing to do from a budget standpoint, to spend down your revolving accounts. Some you have to spend down, but again, when you're taking hits like, oh, my little green light's not working anymore, it's not happy. Oh, there it is. I was covering it up with my finger, that was bright. When we have a cut like this, then it has to be made up somewhere. And the state is not, is, Chapter 70 money is also down. So, we're putting a lot of pressure on the town to fund the schools. And so, making our part of the contribution, that's what we see as our part of the contribution is, comes from our revolving accounts. And that is up 16% from FY '19. So, our total request, and again, there'll be a lot of discussions between now and when the budget is finalized, it's just preliminary hearing. To run the entire district next year, we are requesting $30,866,705. And when you take away our credits of $2,473,000, we, our total FY '20 request is $28,393,705. That is an increase from last year of 1.655787. That is our total request for FY '20. Questions?
Questions from the committee, Dr. Cron?
I'm petrified of taking any money out of the special ed revolving account, seeing that we look back a couple pages ago, and those costs are going up. And that, I mean, building rentals are what they are. You know, daycare, we get, we can get, school choice, if we have it there, that's great. But looking at the special ed revolving account, I mean, that's money that we could have used to offset the special ed stuff. And then I'm looking at the bus account, and didn't we not a couple months ago talk about how we lose our shirt on the buses, and now we're talking about taking money from an account for the buses?
It's in our revolving account, yeah. So, we need to use some of that money. I don't know if you have anything to add on that?
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Cron. On the sped revolving, the source, the revenue stream for the sped revolving is not Circuit Breaker, they're two separate accounts. And the sped revolver is fed predominantly through the preschool program and goes to offset those costs. And we have enough money currently, there is money in sped revolving for us to be able to maintain. And if you actually take a look, we are decreasing the amount that we're using in sped revolve this year.
No, I did see that. I'm just saying, as I look back and we're looking at sped costs going up, it makes more sense for that. I get it, it's a fine, it's a tight rope.
Circuit breaker, I'm more concerned about Circuit Breaker.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And it's a tight rope, because we look at this, and you look at what we get for ELL, and I mean, that's not even the cost of one student probably for a school year, in terms of the money that we actually get from the state on that. So, I'm just saying, it's a fine tight rope, and we have to start bouncing money from one place to the other to cover stuff that is going up and we're not getting help for on the back end from, from the state. You know, it was real nice of DESI to approve that tuition increase for all those private places and not do a damn thing for us, so.
Well, you hit the nail on the head, and there's a lot of talk around, on the state level and legislature around Circuit Breaker in particular, and Chapter 70. Very disappointed in the governor's budget to date. There's been a lot of talk about increasing funding to schools, and yet, we're not seeing it show up on the cherry sheet. So, we're hearing rhetoric that's implying that there's more money going to schools and towns, and yet, the fact is, that's not happening. So, we're very hopeful that Chapter 70 increases over the next couple of months, as budgets are, continue to be revised. But I am very unimpressed with the governor's budget when it comes to a local aid.
Have you been in the air of our state rep about that?
Not yet, no. It's a good point, though.
I think maybe we should, since we got five months till fiscal year.
Absolutely.
And we're not getting anything, you know?
Yeah.
They have a surplus, though.
There was a disappointing article in The Globe the other day about the governor's proposed, all the talk about school budget, who is getting, the cities were getting humongous amounts of money, in my estimation.
Yeah.
And the towns, the smaller towns were just about holding even, if he gets his way.
Right, right.
So, but having said that, when we talk about special ed, that's a very, very, as you certainly know, very flexible number. It can be high, it can be low. You just don't know where it's going to fall. So, with respect to our financial officer, she certainly has a handle on it, and I don't have a problem with $50,000 coming out of there. And I know that probably, if push come to shove, and we really got in big trouble because of special ed, which is something we have no control over, then probably the townspeople would step up at a special meeting and do something with us.
And they have, and history has taught us that they have.
Absolutely.
In recent history.
But we also have a responsibility on the school side to be fiscally, you know, responsible and to save money in those accounts where we can. School choice, for example, the school choice line item is something that we have tremendous flexibility over how we use that money. So, trying to keep that account robust. But someone could look at it and say, you have a million dollars in this account, why aren't you using it? Well, because Monday morning, I could wake up and have two students who moved in, and three-quarters of that is gone overnight. And if we don't have that money, it's a real checkbook, folks. Like, we can't just write checks, so we have to budget for that.
Right. And I think an important note to make, at least for me anyway, is, you know, we talk about special education and the challenges that it brings relative to our budget. But I think the thing that I've observed, both with yourself and with Dr. Miniglia and the rest of the, thank you, and the rest of the admin team, that you guys really don't look at this, these kids as numbers. These kids are human beings, and we're trying to get these children in the best place for them to succeed, hopefully in the least restrictive environment, right here in our own district.
Yeah, that's an excellent point.
And, you know, it's a very difficult and difficult tight rope to walk, but it's one that I observe being done as good as it possibly can be here in Rockland, anyway. Any other comments or questions relative to the preliminary presentation for the budget?
I think the middle school dean position is a genius idea. I know you and I talked about it at length a couple weeks back, and would like to see that happen, because then that frees up the principals to do what they need to do and not worry about dropping the hammer and the fallout that happens afterwards. It can be handled by a dean, and then it can settle as may. So, I think that's a great, a great move to put in there, for sure. We definitely need that with that many students up there, so.
Absolutely.
I wanted to thank Ms. Hackett. I've been in your office when I've run in to do signatures. I've seen your whiteboard and your spreadsheets, and I know you're doing your due diligence to make sure that every penny is accounted for and put in the right spot. So, I thank you and appreciate the time you're putting in for our schools.
Thank you. Quite a team in the office.
You do.
The whole team.
Yeah, Ms. Forlizzi has been phenomenal in assisting me, as has the staff, Donna Capless and Ira Callor in particular.
Right, I've seen you, and I believe that, so.
We have, we have a great team.
Right.
Very lucky.
Yeah.
Very lucky.
Very much, Alan.
Welcome. I'm going to stay up here just for the reading of the...
Yes. So, the next, what Alan is about to reference is, the next item on our agenda under new business is the request for approval of our town meeting articles. And I'm going to take the time and care to read them over right now. The first will be, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of $100,000 to fund the replacement and upgrading of computers and any technology-related expenses, or take any action thereto? Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of $65,700 to fund the fifth year of a five-year combined lease purchase agreement for two 2015 Transit Special Education vans, and the fourth year of a five-year combined lease for four 2016 Ford Transit Special Education vans? And the third year of a five-year combined lease purchase agreement for one 2017 Ford Transit Wheelchair Accessible Special Education van, and one 2017 Ford Transit Special Education van, or take any relative action thereto? Next, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of $7,705 to fund the fourth year of a five-year lease purchase agreement for a 2016-15 passenger multi-function school activity bus, or take any action relative thereto? Next, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of $11,026 to fund the fourth year of a five-year lease purchase agreement for a 2017 F-350 dump plow truck, or take any action relative thereto? Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of $200,000 to fund the repaving of the Estin School driveway and parking lots, or take any action relative thereto? Next, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of $42,000 to fund the purchase of new marked police vehicle with the Town of Rockland specifications for the Rockland Public School Security Resource Officer, or take any action relative thereto? Any comments or questions?
Six over there.
Correct, there are, one, two, three, four, five, six.
Six motions.
There's two more to that.
Wait, there's two more.
No, no, that's the next agenda item, gentlemen.
About town meeting.
Alan, I know you went up there to, I know you went up there to talk about this, and I didn't mean to cut you off.
Oh, no.
Did you want to add anything to that, or talk about any of the items?
No, just that the town has been incredibly generous, and funding of, you know, the $100,000 a year to keep technology running is, I think they have tremendous confidence in Mr. Wells and in the schools and how that money's being used. But I just want to thank the town for their generosity. And I will tell you that we take it very seriously, and we spend their money very seriously, and care very much about how we're spending this money. There was one item in particular that jumped out at me. So, I'll tell you, for example, some of these expenditures actually save us a tremendous amount of money. So, taking from available funds, the $11,026 to help with the lease, not the plow truck, but the van, the van that drives the school activity bus, multi-function school activity bus. So, this $7,000 a year for four years, we use that van, the tennis team uses it, the golf team, the music department, and all, instead of hiring a $600 to $1,000 a day bus. So, there are many, there's much, much cost savings going on in here. So, they're expenditures, but they're very thoughtfully prepared.
Six motions on the regular town meeting.
All those in favor?
I just have one question, I don't think I'd be hurting. Is the $42,000 for the cruiser, is that for the new SRO position?
No, that's for our, for our security officer. That would be for, for Mr. Daley, who does security for us from four to, into the evening. So, he covers our after-school time and our evening time for night school. His car is dying. He has a very old police car that's really...
I've seen it's the only actual Crown Vic.
It's an old Crown Vic, yeah.
In rotation anywhere in America.
It reminds me of my first car, I'm waiting to have to be called in to fix the floorboards.
Smokey and the Bandit.
Exactly, yeah.
No, that makes sense. I just was making, I just wanted to make clear on that, so.
We have six motions and six seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's a vote, thank you very much. Next up, on the next item on our agenda is a request for approval for special town meeting articles, and there are two of them. The first of which is, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of $85,000 to fund an unanticipated increase in homeless transportation costs, or take any action relative thereto? Next, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of $65,000 to fund the cost of replacing the hot water tanks at the high school and the Estin schools, or take any action relative thereto? Discussion or questions on those two items?
Motion to accept the special town meeting, two articles.
Second again.
All those in favor? That's a vote, thank you very much. Next up, we have the request for approval of fundraisers. And we have six of them. The Senior Class is going to be hoping to host a meet raffle at Players in February, March. The Student Council is looking to have a Hilliard's Chocolate Bar fundraiser in March. The Harvard Model Congress is looking to have a night at the 99 in March. And the Hockey Boosters are looking to host three fundraisers, first being RBG Proceed Night in February, March. RBG being Rockland Bar and Grill. Hockey Boosters is also going to run an LRC tournament, which I believe is left, right, center, in February. And the Hockey Boosters is going to be looking to run the Dogs Dash in June, which I aspire to take part in. So, we'll be looking for six motions.
Six motions to approve.
All those in favor? That is a vote, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Next up, we have a request for approval of grade reconfiguration for the Rockland Elementary School Building Project. Dr. Cron?
Yes, so, as we're all well aware, part of the building project that's proposed is reorganizing, taking all Grade 1 through 4 students and putting them in a new building, and putting all kindergarten students in the Estin School, and expanding that to include the offering of free full-day preschool to all townspeople. So, part, this is for the MSBA and the building project. The school committee needs to approve the grade reconfiguration as discussed.
Is that one or two motions?
That would be one motion, yeah.
One motion to approve the grade reconfiguration.
We have a motion, two seconds.
One second.
We do, all those in favor? That is a vote, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Last, but certainly not least, is our public service announcements, and as always, ladies first. And, oh, jeez, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I skipped over item F. Request for approval, I'm eager tonight.
You're hungry, aren't you?
Yeah, I'm hungry.
Me too.
Did you hear that stomach growl? We do have...
Probably been moving this way.
Item F is the request for approval of the auditor, Richard Swanson, for the student activity funds for fiscal year 2018. Dr. Cron, if you'd like to talk about that?
We'd like to have our student activity accounts audited, which I think is a healthy thing to do for any organization. But I will turn the rest of the comments over to my colleague.
Yes, I think it's very good, I have no suspicions, and this doesn't come from any place of suspicion, just where are we at? Is there something we can do better going forward and working to make sure that we're in compliance with all DOE regulations? So, I can personally vouch for the individual who's doing it, this is an internal audit, not an external audit. And so, this is coming in to help us.
Sounds like best practice to me.
Absolutely.
Excellent, we have a motion to approve, and a second. All those in favor? That is a vote, thank you very much. Back to where I was here. Public service announcements, and we always like to start with ladies first, and of course, in this case, we'd like to start with our wonderful student representative, Ms. Jasmine Morse. Jasmine?
Not much, just have a great and safe February break.
Very good. Sound advice, thank you. Mrs. Maroni?
I don't have anything much either. Happy Valentine's Day.
Happy Valentine's Day, and also safe and fun February break.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mills?
The, one of the things I'd like to just talk about is the Cub Scouts. They were the wee blows that came in to work with the, in the shop.
Yeah.
And making tool kits, and that, 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 I understand that was a lot of fun for the kids, you know, I have some Cub Scouts in my household, so they were very pleasant to supply and surprise.
It's great to see the groups get together like that.
And Valentine's Day is coming up, yeah, and that's about, yeah, February break, yeah.
Sounds good to me.
That's already here, huh? Crazy.
Next week. Look, she's only a little excited.
I know. I am.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Mr. Phelps?
We're getting a little bit political. Because of the loss of Mr. Biggins, that's about to happen, and I might add, I think, and I've been around a while, the best chairman that this committee has had in my, my tenure is over like 25 years observing on this committee. I'm so sorry to lose him. And having said that, to my knowledge, as of today, I'm the only one to have taken out papers, and there are two seats to be filled. We need good, qualified people to go ahead and, and do their, their duty and go out and take out papers to, to serve this town as a member of the school committee. So I would ask that people consider that, there's only two more weeks that they can take out these papers. So I would ask that anybody and everybody that's interested, go see the town clerk, take their papers out, visit with perhaps a superintendent to find out, or any one of us on the committee, what the job is, and go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps, both for your kind words, I'm not sure I'm so deserving, but also for your sentiment, I think it is important. I, you know, as I am getting ready to leave, I'll tell anybody who's willing to listen that these were some of the most fulfilling six years that I've ever had in being able to volunteer in this committee. So whomever does decide to take up and take out some papers and take on this opportunity, I know that they'll enjoy it greatly. Mr. Graffalo?
Yes, I will second what Dick said, it, we need to get people in to be on the ballot, we don't want blank spaces, for sure. It's very vital to this town and to the school system that we have a fully functioning board moving forward. Aside from that, I want to thank you, Dr. Cron, for making the tough decision you had to make today with, with Dave Taylor on, you know, what we're going to do with school tomorrow. I know people are upset, according to social media world, because it's a half a day, but I can tell you from somebody who spent four years on a personal injury desk and a bodily injury desk handling auto claims, you don't want to be out driving in the middle of the commute home when there's snow like that happening. It just doesn't work out well. Accidents will and can happen, and I would much prefer that our students are home safe at that point than in a bus or trying to walk home. So, you know, complain all you want about it on Facebook, but recognize again that we actually are doing this for the safety of all of our kids. Other than that, Happy Valentine's Day, have a great vacation, and I will actually see you guys, the meeting, two meetings after vacation. I will be away on vacation when we have our next meeting after vacation, so everybody have a great vacation.
Thank you, Mr. Graffalo. I know Mr. and Ms. Mills has something like that.
I just have another question, let me bring this up. There is two, there is two slots to be filled in the next election for school committee. If, what's, what happens if the, there's only one person elected? Isn't the town now, is it's up to the selectmen to appoint them?
No, it could be a write-in.
It could be a write-in, but, yeah.
And then we have, if, if no write-ins, then we have to go through like we did...
This election, right.
The last time we had a vacancy.
It's an interesting hypothetical, I hope it's one that we don't have to get.
That's why, yeah, that's why I'm, you know...
But I know the town charter would certainly give some guidance.
Yeah, I was just, I'll see if I can find out on that, too, just because I'd rather have the, the people of the town vote.
Make that decision, I agree 100%.
Make that decision versus a, another elected board.
I agree 100%. That being said, I don't have a whole lot to say tonight that hasn't been already mentioned other than tomorrow, where it is going to be an early release. I hope that all of our student body and those out driving on our roads will be very, very careful in the weather and be safe, and hopefully everyone can get home and, get right home and hit the books and start studying, it's that time of year still. I know they'll take advantage of all that time. Our students are quite prodigious like that.
So is Jasmine, I guess.
I know Jasmine will, absolutely.
She knew that she had to be here.
Well, that being said, with nothing else, we entertain a motion to adjourn, which we have, and a second, and a second. All those in favor? That is a vote. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, have a great night.